Well, good afternoon. Today is April 4th, 2022, 2022, and these microphones are working well now, so this is good. Welcome to the Rowan County Commission meeting. We always like to see folks here because we get lonely here sometimes, but we're glad you're here. What happens here is important, and so we're glad that you're here. It makes it even more important when you're here, so thank you for being here. It's the tradition of this board and boards all across our nation. We begin with a couple of things. We'll have our chaplain come forward, our chaplain junior, come for our junior chaplain, we could call him. This is our chaplain's son, Michael, and so we're glad he's here. We're going to have a what's called a solemnizing prayer. And I'll tell you what that is. That is a prayer for the commissioners. It's not for you. What we do, we really study a lot on and we seek wisdom where we can get it, and so we'll have him do that. Following that, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Dear and follower, we come to you today. We just thank you for this day, giving us another day on this earth. We just ask you to bless these commissioners, give them wisdom and strength, Lord, in their jobs, that you'll just guide and lead them in their day-to-day lives, and just strengthen them, Lord. Just be with this meeting today. God, lead them. May it go according to your will. And God, we just thank you for everything you do for us, and we just ask you again, be with this meeting and give them wisdom, in thy name and prayer. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Michael, for being with us. Tell your dad we missed him. All right, there's a couple of additions that the county manager gave us. I believe both of these are consent agenda, so item number one would be consent item L. Item number two would be consent item M. So if that's okay with you guys, can we get a motion to approve those two added?
Some.
Second. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any other additions or deletions, commissioners? All right, if not, then do we have a motion to approve the agendas amended?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. We have the minutes have been provided for us of the March 21, 22, 2022 meeting. Had a chance to review those. Any changes or corrections? If not, we have a motion to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye. Then we'll go back to the consent agenda that's been amended. Motion and a second to approve the amended consent agenda.
Aye.
All in favor say aye. All right, we've got a couple of things for special recognition today, and so I'd like to turn things over to Commissioner Caskey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are going to have a proclamation for Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Those are our unsung heroes who do a lot of good work. You know, I've always said that I don't know that I could do that job because you got to go through all that stress, sitting there, having to visualize what's going on and not being able to actually do things physically to help, but you have to work through the phone lines and over the radios and be supporting. I know that we appreciate them. We're always the the police and the dispatchers always have that love-hate communicate relationship, but we like to pick at each other, but they're a very, very important group, and so they deserve much respect and everything that everyone else does. But this is our proclamation for Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 10th through 16th, 2022. Whereas the services and functions performed by the Rowan County Public Safety Telecommunicators are critical to the safety and welfare of the citizens of Rowan County and the municipalities. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators provide 24-hour service seven days per week as the vital link in the chain of emergency service providers, and whereas these dedicated professionals are the initial point of contact for citizens in the crisis situation who need emergency services assistance in answering the public's daily cries for help, they are often instrumental in saving lives and reducing property damage when tragedy strikes. Now therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners is hereby proclaim April 10th through 16th, 2022 is Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Rowan County and urges all citizens to acknowledge the contributions in these loyal, of these loyal public servants. This is the fourth day of April 2022, and that's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Any other comments? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there, are there folks here from our telecommunications? Yeah. Y'all come on up, and commissioners, if we'll join them out front, we'll present them with this and get a picture with them.
Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child maltreatment is a community problem and finding a solution depends upon involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child maltreatment occurs when parents find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and unable to cope. And whereas approximately 117,268 children were subject of investigations of abuse, neglect, and/or dependency in North Carolina in fiscal year 2020. And whereas 27 children were victims of homicide by their parent or caretaker in North Carolina during the year 2020. And whereas the majority of child maltreatment cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas the effects of child maltreatment are felt by whole communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas effective child maltreatment prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Rowan County and calls upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child maltreatment and strengthen the communities in which we live. Thank you.
You have Amy Brown from Smart Start Rowan, Alyssa Harris, the Director of our Health Partner, Shanae Ben-Groh. Thank you. Prevent Child Abuse Program, and of course, Micah Ennis, our Director of Social Services. Please give her a round.
They're going to want to get paid. Want to get paid.
Please, yes, please do. Yeah, yeah. Mike, just pull the mic toward you, yeah.
We'll need approval of the Rowan Child Protection Team annual report, but we can get that at the end. So I am Amy Brown. I'm just going to speak just for a minute and then let the rest of the team take over. Most of you know me as the Executive Director of Smart Start Rowan, but this year I have the honor of chairing the Rowan Community Child Protection Team. So you have the annual report from 2021 in your packet. Just as a reminder, all community protection teams are tasked with child well-being and anything related to that. And we have a team of this four people, these four people, plus many others listed on page two of the report, who all work in some way, shape, or form with child-serving agencies. So we come together on a regular basis throughout the year to look at cases. We look at child fatality cases and look at prevention measures for those and come up with a list of recommendations for the community based on those reviews. So we are all working together to ensure child well-being and prevent future cases of child fatalities. So we have that report, and then we're going to tell you real briefly a little bit about how we work together in our agencies to serve children and families. So I'm the Executive Director of Smart Start Rowan, and we are written into state legislation in one of 75 Smart Start partnerships across the state of North Carolina. And we serve children both through age five and their families to hopefully instill the structure instability that's needed early in life so that children are healthy and ready to learn when they enter school. And hopefully that stays with them throughout life, which helps contribute to economic stability for our communities. We also have a very important week ourselves going on this week. This is the National Week of the Young Child. We're super excited to be out and about in the community in person again. We haven't done that for two years. So we have volunteers going out and helping make the community aware of the needs of young children and the support systems that are available to them, and reading in classrooms for young children and that sort of thing. So I'm going to pass it over to Sean, who's with Prevent Child Abuse Rowan, and he'll tell you a little bit about what they do.
Good afternoon. Prevent Child Abuse Rowan was incorporated 20 years ago in 2002, and since that time, we have worked with thousands of children providing our services. In the first quarter of this year, our caseload is up over 58% over last year. And we're projected to be the busiest year we've had in many, many years. In response to the increase, we are adding therapeutic programs to expand the types of therapies available, including support groups, equine therapy, and day camps. And while most people think we only treat children who have experienced abuse, we also have a robust prevention program with two main components. The first is our Stop, Go, Tell program that's taught in the schools in Rowan County. We reach over 2,300 children per year in 20 of our elementary schools. We have also expanded this program into three other counties in North Carolina. And the second prevention program is our Positive Parenting Program called Triple P. This comprehensive program helps parents learn appropriate evidence-based practices to help them parent in a positive, productive manner. This well-established program that reaches hundreds of parents each year is in collaboration with Smart Start Rowan and through the generosity of the Rowan County Commissioners. We know that a strong parenting program is one of the best prevention strategies we can offer. We're extremely grateful for the continued support of Smart Start Rowan, the Board of Commissioners, and our community, which allows us to offer our programs at no cost to our families. We appreciate this board's commitment to the health and safety of the future of Rowan County, which is our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
I will turn this over to Alyssa, who needs no introduction.
Alyssa, will you introduce yourself?
Let me just pull the mic down here. Okay. So my name is Alyssa Harris. I am the Director of Public Health at Rowan County Public Health, and I just want to say thank you for taking the time to honor this month and to think about child abuse prevention and look at that very collaborative effort that we have and that you are a big part of. So I will not belabor the point. I know you guys have a lot of agenda items, but I do want to highlight two programs that I find so important and give a little bit of background into what public health is doing. So our Public Health Department provides safety net services for primary care and also dental care for children in our community. Very in-need services and helps those who are across the spectrum of socioeconomic status in our community. In addition to that, we do have a care management program for at-risk children. So at-risk children, those children who are experiencing toxic stress, those families who may be in high-need situations, they are able to come to us to get referrals, treatment, and connection to services. And so that is an essential piece of how we are working to change the, what we're seeing in our community to hopefully have healthier children in the years to come. And then I also want to highlight a program that the commissioners funded now almost three years ago, and that's our Community Resiliency Model Training Program. We have now trained over 35 individuals in our community to go and provide the Community Resiliency Model Training to schools, faith community, organizations, who we all can need a little extra help when it comes to skills to calm our bodies down and help build resiliency and boost our mental health. And so we've seen that in action right now. We've had trainers go out to North Rowan High School to help provide that skill set to the teachers, to the students, and to the community that surrounds that school system. So I just want to again say thank you for your time. Thank you for recognizing this very important month, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Micah Ennis, who is the Director of our Social Services.
Thank you. Thank you again for your time and attention, as we've shared just a few examples of a wide range of creative partnerships we have in Rowan County aimed at child abuse prevention. In the last two calendar years, 2022 and 2021, 192 Rowan County children entered the protective custody of Rowan County Department of Social Services. During that same timeframe, from January 2020 to December 2021, 205 families participated in mandatory protective services because of child maltreatment findings. That's outside the number of children in foster care. These interventions, these interventions are valuable and necessary to help us prevent further abuse and neglect. However, preventive services, services are the highest goal. Avoiding child maltreatment in the first place by supporting parents, ensuring accessible treatment for mental health needs and substance use disorders, and creating opportunities for healthy child and family development. Those are the highest goals. On behalf of our Community Child Protection Team, just a few representatives here and myself, I ask that you accept and approve our annual report. Thank you for issuing the proclamation, and most of all, we thank you for your leadership and example when it comes to making decisions that support children and families in our community.
Thank you, Micah. Thank all of you for being here. Do we have a motion to accept the report?
Some.
Second.
Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for being here with us tonight and for all the work that you do. Appreciate you. All right, we will move to item number four, Scott Shelton, public hearing and summary presentation on Red Rock Industrial Park. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members, for agreeing to hear this presentation on an incentive request from Red Rock Developments. Red Rock was founded in 2007. They're based in Columbia, South Carolina. They are a real estate and private investment company that focuses on spec building development, mainly wholesale warehousing, distribution facilities in major U.S. markets. And according to their website, since 2007, they've developed over 25 million square feet of Class A industrial product valued at over $2.7 billion. And they're looking for a site in the Charlotte region along the 85 corridor for a new industrial park. And they've identified a site we've always referred to as the Carlton or Kern Carlton Properties on Long Ferry Road as a potential location for this park. It's about 380 acres comprised of six parcels. It's located about a half mile past the Chewy facility, right before you get to the Dukeville Road or Dukeville Community. And have acquired Red Rock plans to construct up to six buildings totaling about 2.6 million square feet in space. One of the buildings would be on the northern side of Long Ferry Road. The other five would be on the southern side. Red Rock is estimating this capital investment to be $198 million. And once completed, these buildings would be leased or sold to end-users who would create jobs and of course bring their businesses to Rowan County. Don't have any numbers on the final job amounts. It's going to depend on who the end-user actually is. And I mentioned earlier, there'd be six buildings. They plan to develop these over three phases. The first two buildings would be the larger ones. I think one's about half million square feet. One's a little over a million square feet. Their estimate is that it'll be done quarter for 2022, but they may have to revisit that based on everything we're hearing regarding supplies and construction timelines, but the capex for that is supposed to be about $117 million. Phase two would be the two mid-sized buildings, about $55 million in investment. That would be done quarter for 2024. And finally, the two smaller buildings that total about 330,000 square feet would be done in 2025 with a $26 million investment. And again, there's a site plan, and it'd be, if you can see it, Building A and Building D would be the two that'd be the focus for Fagus One. Again, one on the northern side, one on the southern side. To make this park happen, they're going to have to have a substantial investment in infrastructure. According to engineering studies, it's going to require about a 4,000 linear foot extension of 16-inch water main to the site. Also about another 4,000 linear feet of four-inch sewer force main, and also a pump station that would be installed on the southern portion of the development. And of course, we've heard a lot about traffic out there, and it's going to require substantial improvements to Long Ferry Road to make this happen. Now, a traffic impact analysis was completed in February regarding the project. And based on this TIA, the Department of Transportation is going to require numerous improvements to Long Ferry Road as a condition of their approval of the project. And these improvements include, among others, installation of traffic signals, Long Ferry Road, Front Creek Road, and traffic signals at the east, I'm sorry, the northbound and southbound ramps, and also numerous turn lanes and extensions of existing ones along Long Ferry Road. Now, Red Rock is responsible for these improvements, which they estimate to be about $4.2 million. Now, in regards to zoning, right now, the property is owned for residential and agricultural purposes. So either Red Rock or the current property owners will have to apply for a conditional district rezoning, and the company is going to work with Rowan County staff regarding this process. Now, under your adopted incentive grant policy, phase one of this project would normally qualify for a Level Three grant, which is equivalent to 85% of the new taxes paid over five years. That values about $3.2 million. Getting back to the infrastructure improvements for a moment, as I mentioned, that's 4.2. That's the estimate for these improvements. Red Rock's requesting that the commissioners consider reimbursing them the 4.2 million for these infrastructure improvements instead of the Level One grant. Now, again, it would be a reimbursement paid upon the lease of or sale of all the properties in phase one to a third-party job creator that qualifies for grants under current general statutes. And as far as the numbers for that, we anticipate this investment of about $117 million would generate about $770,000 a year in taxes, about 7.7 million over 10 years. So I'm not advocating the, because I know there are other avenues that this could be paid for, but if you were to use property tax revenue as a model, of course, it would be about a net and real property tax revenue to the county of about $3.4 million over that 10-year span. Now, I don't want to spend too much time on phase two and three, but they are requesting, when phase two and phase three happens, standard incentives. Those would be brought back before the commissioners when the time is appropriate. Once those buildings were done and there were tenants or prospective owners of the property, they would go back to the commissioners for an incentive grant, again, phase two and phase three. But phase two, based on its investment, would equal a grant of about 80% of new taxes paid over five years. And that would be worth about $1.4 million in incentives and a net to the county of about $2.1 million. Again, that's just for phase two. Phase three, as I mentioned, $26 million in investment. That would normally qualify for a Level One grant, equivalent to 75% of taxes paid. And based on current numbers that we have, that would mean about $640,000 grant to the company and net of about a million dollars to Rowan County. Of course, these numbers could change as the years go by and prices go up or down, but again, that'll be something that'll be brought to the board when the time is appropriate. So what we're asking for tonight, if the board is willing, is to consider this request from Red Rock. And again, that's a reimbursement of 4.2 million to Red Rock for water, sewer, and road improvements to Long Ferry Road. And again, we'd ask the stipulation that reimbursement would only be paid upon the lease of or sale of these buildings to third-party job creators. And also, before I close, just wanted to make you aware that we do have a representative of Red Rock on the phone. He would have come in person, but he's a little bit under the weather. It's Todd Ward with Red Rock. And April, if you can, will you see if he's still on the line?
Yes, sir. He is still joining us.
Hello, Todd. Would you like to say anything to the commissioners?
Scott, I believe you did a very good job of, of an overview of what the project is. I also appreciate the commission allowing me to join remotely, as Scott mentioned, a little under the weather, and wanted to make sure everybody stayed healthy there in Rowan County. Simply just wanted to say that, you know, in addition to the investment that Red Rock's making as a spec and as the speculative buildings, that does not include the outfit that any of the tenants, employers, or however you'd like to phrase it, would be making that would contribute to that real property number for that tax base. So the shell buildings that we do are minimal so that we don't have to tear things out for those prospective employers or tenants to come in. So there would be additional investment on that real property side in addition to the personal property that the, those folks would bring as well. Appreciate everything that Rowan County has done so far. It's been a wonderful process to work and appreciate just being able to speak to you tonight and your consideration for this project. Commissioners, any question for Todd while we have him on the phone or on Zoom?
Yeah, I have one. Thank you for speaking with us. Do you have an estimated timeframe for this construction to start and then get completed?
Yes, sir, we do. As Scott mentioned, things are ever-evolving right now in the construction with supply of materials. But as of right now, we are speculating to commence construction or groundbreaking. Assuming we have all the permits in place and everything, sir, at the end of the summer. And then it would be approximately the end of Q3, the beginning of Q4 is when we would actually have the buildings completed or what we call a certificate of completion for the shell building. That said, we would start marketing the buildings as soon as we commence construction. So tenants could come on board, you know, as early as that first, first couple of months, or, you know, it could be later to the end. But we, with the industrial market, the way it is and the greater But we, with the industrial market, the way it is in the greater Charlotte region, we are very, very bullish on the prospects of this industrial park.
How is the road improvements going to impact your timeframe for construction?
They wouldn't, sir. We have those built into our schedule, so they would be done concurrent with the other site work phased in, of course, with all necessary safety precautions taken in accordance with NC DOT regulations. Those improvements, as Scott alluded to, actually provide for right turn lanes and left turn lanes in and out of the project with two signals, as he mentioned as well. Because of that, the through traffic that you would see now would not be hindered, at least in design. And so we have worked very closely with NC DOT and even made sure that we didn't meet minimum standards, that we went above and beyond for the traveling public safety.
Thank you.
Todd, that, what you said, I think is significant because that's been the concern of most of us, is travel on Long Ferry Road. But to kind of crystallize it, if you want to turn right into this project, there will be a turn lane. If you want to turn left into the project, there will be a left turn lane. So you'll be maintaining the travel lanes as before.
That is correct, sir.
Yeah. Another thing we would add to that, and I don't know if I put Ed on, on the spot here, but in addition to what Red Rock has had to do in the course of any type of project like this, they need to do a DOT study. But the county also recognized that, you know, Long Ferry Road is an important road for lake travel, residential travel. So we worked with the MPO, the Municipal Planning Organization, to commission our own study of Long Ferry Road from tip to tip. That will be done, I mean, conjunction with this, with, with the DOT, existing DOT study that Red Rock has already done. With that in mind, we're also going to do a county study that would go all the way to the lake so that we could understand current and future travel. And so combine that with, with what they have already done. Interestingly, Spencer is also interested in that study, and Spencer is looking at doing a tag-on study to our Long Ferry Road study because they have a lot of projects that are looking to happen on the west side of 85. And so they're going to be doing a study as well, along with the county and DOT. So we got, we got copies of the DOT study. If there's anyone that would like a copy of it, happy to give that to you. I've got a few copies of it. But again, if you want to turn right, you'll, you'll turn right from turn lane. Want to turn left, you'll turn left from a turn lane. And there'll be a couple of new traffic lights there, there at 85. Todd, I think I read also, if you can recall, I think I had read that if you're going north on 85 and you turn onto Exit 81, that there will be a right-hand lane that goes all the way to Chewy. Isn't that right now?
Yes, sir. That, that is correct. And additionally, there will be two turn lanes coming out of the Chewy facility onto Long Ferry to make that a little easier access and not have things back up as well. You know, that just benefits the project. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may add a little bit to that, when I said we made sure we went above and beyond, when you do a traffic study, as, as we mentioned, this is speculative development, so we don't know exactly who those tenants would be at this point in time or those owners would be. So with traffic engineering based on different types of uses, there are different amounts of traffic that are generated that are standardized in the traffic engineering world. We worked with NC DOT to make sure that we were above and beyond what we perceived to be the types of tenants in this particular development, to make sure that we captured everything and made sure that we didn't do below improvements based on our traffic generation. So we really tried with them to create scenarios that would be more of a potential maximum trip generation, again, to make sure that we protected the traveling public.
The DOT actually required you to make sure that the Chewy project traffic was even taken into account and that physical changes had to be done to Long Ferry Road to account for the Chewy traffic, right?
That is correct, sir.
So it sounds like you could come right off of Long Ferry. If you're going to Chewy, you'd have your own dedicated lane, or you could go to a lane to the left of that, which would again be through traffic.
Yes.
So that's kind of a better thing than we have now. Yeah, good.
Scott, in working with DOT, or perhaps I should ask the gentleman on the phone, how far past this development is DOT looking to widen the road?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure the distance on that. I mean, perhaps maybe Todd knows that, but I don't know that number.
Ma'am, I do not know that particular number. Our traffic study actually stopped at the eastern edge of our project, so we did not go further down Long Ferry into the, I'll call it more residential area. So I'm not sure about anything beyond that.
Okay, thank you.
That's where our study would pick up as well. It's from that easternmost boundary of the project site all the way to the lake. Any other questions for Todd? All right, Scott, don't go anywhere. So this is the part of, of a public hearing where we have a public hearing. So we're going to open up the floor, and if there's anyone that has anything they'd like to discuss regarding this project, it's a great time to come forward. Yeah, you could come forward, come up to the microphone, just give us your name and your address, and we'd be happy to, to hear from you.
I'm William Clay Schoen, Jr. I live on Long Ferry Road 2710. I'm just the second house based in the military fire department here. And Judy, she answered some of my questions. She asked about how far the widening of the road was going to be here. And that was a whole lot of what I was here for. And thank you, Judy, here. And is there, any of this going to be passed on to the taxpayers? On the cost of what's going on with the, the widening of the road up to the eastern park you were speaking about? Is any of this going to be passed on to the taxpayers to pay? Or is Red Rock going to take care of all the expense?
So I think there's probably three issues. One would be Scott talked about in his presentation, a water line. We already have water that we ran past there, so that's not the water line they're talking about. They have to have a fire line. I think that's the one we're talking about. So that fire line comes on the south side of that property. It comes from, I don't know where it comes from, but it's about 2,500 feet of fire line that comes through there. So that wouldn't be on the road. And then they would extend the sewer from Chewy. The state paid for that project to bring it under the interstate to Chewy through a grant. And so in this project, they would bring it from Chewy down to here. And then through this DOT study, and again, I've got some copies, if anyone would like a copy, that would include all of those. So they intend to design, engineer, hire contractors and pay for all of that. Normally, in a economic development project like this, we would be negotiating with them on some type of incentive to build speculative buildings for jobs for us. So what we're going to do, or what they're asking us to do, they'll pay for all of the improvements, and instead of us giving them an incentive over a five-year period of time, we would pay back the cost of those. So.
The taxpayers are going to be involved with this for the reimbursement through the county?
Well, the, the developer actually pays. Scott, if you've got the numbers, you could put back up the tax, the, the company pays, the developer pays, what was it, Scott, $700 and some thousand dollars a year in taxes? And so in an incentive-type situation, we agree to pay, to refund part of that back to them as an inducement for them to do these things in our community, to bring jobs and whatnot. Scott, did you get that number?
$769,000.
$769,000, right. So instead of just giving them that back as an inducement, we would refund up to two, 4.2 million back to them because a lot of that is road improvements down Long Ferry Road that, that, that we would help pay for as well.
Okay, another thing, if you got time?
Yes, we got all night.
No, we ain't spending all night here. This the proper time to talk about rezoning of the agriculture property? Is this the proper time to talk about it?
So this is about, this is about an incentive hearing.
Okay.
That'll actually be in a separate hearing, and do we, do we know a date for that? Don't have a date yet. So we will have lots of time to talk about that as well.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you for coming. Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah.
Hi, I'm Jackie Watson. I live at 3715 Long Ferry Road, just past the project, but I still have a couple of good questions. Millions of speculative square feet of warehouse space. How much more warehouse space does Rowan County need? I think at every exit off the interstate, we have empty warehouse space at every exit all over. That's my first question. Does anybody know how many empty square feet of warehouse space we already have? Now, we're going to add a million speculative more square feet. No tenants.
You want an answer?
I'd like some kind of idea of what you guys think, that we really need another million square feet of empty warehouse space on Long Ferry Road? It's going to bring jobs, okay? Where are these people going to live? They're all going to commute from Charlotte and Winston every day? If they live here, there's nowhere to live. There's constantly articles in the paper about no housing in Rowan County. There's no apartments, there's no houses, there's no land to build anything. Where are these people going to go? And if they do move here, what schools are they going to go to? East Rowan has a dozen trailers out front. West Rowan, Salisbury, and North are old and need to be replaced. We need four new high schools. Where's that money going to come from? Our county has to benefit in some way from all these new jobs and commerce that's headed our way. We're in the middle of two big metropolitan areas, but we don't have the infrastructure to support thousands more people coming here on a daily basis with food, clothing, housing, schooling. That's just my idea, the long run. Where are we going to look, where are we looking in the long run for just our county? And another thing, you mentioned on the other side of the interstate, Spencer has new projects coming up. What new Spencer projects are coming up? Are they going to put more square feet over there, too? We'd like to hear about that. That's going to affect our whole neighborhood also. Just now, to get from the interstate to North Salisbury Avenue at Hendrix is a nightmare most days. The cars are backed up 10, 12 deep there. Are we going to widen Long Ferry Road from the interstate to North Salisbury Avenue? Those are all my questions. And I think the rest of my neighbors have those kind of questions, too. I don't know if they have any others, but lots of questions, and I've gotten no answers. So I don't know.
No, we're going to get through round one first. You know, recently, information that is, I guess, industry information about the Charlotte region, we're part of the Charlotte region, and right now, existing is 34 million square feet of demand of current today, this, this second demand for manufacturing and warehouse space in the Charlotte region. And so there's no real secret as to why Rowan County is kind of in the spotlight in this because there's huge demand. And so, you know, just a couple of months ago, we had a business that came up here and was desperately looking for about 80,000 square feet of space to do manufacturing, and we couldn't find it. We had nothing. And so this is all, they, they ended up having to move, take a company, a manufacturing company to Huntersville because Huntersville had just completed a whole industrial park of, of these type buildings, and he was able to get a very nice facility there. And so we missed out on those. So the, the developers aren't, I, I think they're fairly smart folks. They don't want to build $117 million worth of facilities to sit on and go broke. They all have deep relationships across the country with companies that are looking to manufacture in the southeast. And so they're building because of the demand that is right here in our backyard. And so six years ago, Jim Green and I were standing down in Granite Quarry at, at an empty street with no speculative buildings on them. We had nothing to show anybody. And we, we hooked up with a real estate broker that went out over the, across the whole southeast to try to find someone that would build a building in Rowan County that we could try to use to attract a company here. And for two solid years, the answer was no. No, 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 and again, no, no, and no. And so we sat here with no prospects whatsoever. And so now, because of a lot of really hard work from a whole lot of people across the whole spectrum, Rowan County has been noticed. And so along the 85 corridor, this is beginning to happen, and these folks aren't building them if they don't think they can fill them. Regarding houses, Aaron, I'd ask Aaron something not long ago, and in 2021, there were 651 permits pulled for new homes in 2021. That was down in the hundreds before, just not many. So you look at East Spencer is building houses, Rockwell is building houses, Granite Quarry is building houses, China Grove is building apartments and houses, Salisbury is building apartments and houses, Landis and Kannapolis are building apart, are building houses. So that we, we do have a concern about, okay, so what happens with the schools? You know, we, we got to, but the, the tough thing is, just a few years ago, we were trying to figure out how to just put a roof on a school. And so how do we begin to afford the things that we all say we value? Like enough sheriff and police to be on the street to keep us safe? Those don't come free. These things come through investment in our community, and people say, well, I want a livable wage. Well, guess what? Six years ago, they were hiring at $10 and $12 an hour, and now it's $18 and $20 an hour. And so there's, there is this push and pull. The push and pull is the 100-plus thousand folks saying, I want a better job. I want a better job, I want a job with benefits. I want a job with vacation, I want a job with a 401K. I want a job that pays me well. I want a job that gives me hope. I want a job where I don't have to work three part-time. I can be home with my kids. And this is the way we do these things, is we make ourselves attractive in a lot of ways so that higher-paying jobs come to Rowan County to take care and check all of those boxes. And so the spinoffs that come from this are tremendous. The jobs, the retail sales, the payroll that comes off of these are a big, big, big number. And so this is, this is new to all of us. It's what we've been waiting for for years and decades. And suddenly, as someone says, we're an overnight success. So you are right to say, I think at every exit, there's something going on. Old Beatty Ford Road, we just had the announcement with Macy's. That's a tremendous benefit to this community. On Peeler Road, there's a project. On Webb Road, there's a project. But they're not building them if there's not the demand, so.
Jackie, can, let me just interject. The nature of speculative buildings is this, is that Red Rock is gonna spend millions and millions and millions of dollars on buildings. Their taxes are gonna come due every year like yours and mine because, well, if we choose to pay for the water rather than to give them incentives. So whether they rent that place or not, their tax bill is gonna be coming due. Anything that we do is not prefaced by, you're gonna have to wait until, you know, we rent this place. So they're taking that responsibility. And whether there's anybody in that building or not, somebody's gotta pay the taxes. If not, county ends up with a real nice building. So when you ask about what is in it for the county, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year after these buildings are completed are gonna be what's in it for the county for the rest of their usable life.
And that's empty. But let me give you some numbers that you all need to understand on. Let's talk for a second about Macy's. And that'll give you a little idea about the value of some of this building. Macy's is gonna build, let's, I'll just say, a six-hundred-million-dollar facility. They're gonna employ twenty-eight-hundred full-time workers. We agreed to, let's just say, refund eighty percent of their taxes for fifteen years. So your question to us would be, man, you're giving up eighty percent, and you're only keeping twenty. Is that the end of the discussion? Is that the end of the question? Well, that's an empty building. Twenty-five, twenty-eight-hundred plus full-time, plus part-time and seasonal workers. Does anyone, and raise your hand if you know the answer to this, do you know what the annual payroll that Macy's is gonna dump into this local economy is gonna be?
Eighty-four million dollars.
A hundred million dollars. A hundred million dollars of payroll. Now, when a hundred million dollars in payroll gets dumped through families into a community, what do they do? They buy houses, they buy cars, they go to restaurants, they buy baseball bats for their kids, they do all of that.
And they get Jackie to come take their picture?
Yeah. The demand for these services increases, and that is what they call spin-off employment. And the spin-off employment from a hundred million dollars of payroll will create an additional six hundred jobs. The jobs from that money being poured into the community will create an additional seventy-five million dollars in retail sales in our community. And the additional six hundred jobs generates an additional thirty million dollars of pay. So we go back to the original question. I'm perfectly willing to have a discussion of whether it's wise or not to give an eighty percent grant back because it really, it's opinion, right? We gotta figure out, what do we think is the best thing? But our part of a fifteen-year incentive was twenty-five million dollars over fifteen years. If someone's got a calculator real quick, twenty-five million divided by fifteen years, it's one million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a year that we're giving up. Could that be used to put roofs on buildings? To pay for police and fire and sheriff and all that? Absolutely. In exchange for that, we chose to benefit twenty-five-hundred, twenty-eight-hundred, folks keep saying twenty-five-hundred, that number went up, to twenty-eight-hundred full-time folks and payroll of a hundred million dollars a year. We're giving up one and two-thirds million dollars to get over one hundred million dollars poured into this community every year. Now, will every one of those people live in Rowan County? Probably not, this is the last thing I'll say. Again, Todd is probably still on here. Maybe Todd can tell us about that. Well, Todd is on the development side. These folks, they do a lot of studies. They're gonna do environmental studies, traffic studies. They do a whole, one of the studies they do is, if I'm gonna build a six-hundred-million-dollar facility, are we gonna have the twenty-eight-hundred people available to us? So while a lot of folks and the general public say, where are they gonna get these folks? The studies that they do are actually part of the reason they're coming here. Because Rowan County, being in the center of this workforce universe, you would actually have to go to Atlanta to find a bigger available workforce. So I know the position we're in now, where we're all saying, where we get these folks to work? They are convinced they'll get them. Chewy got them. And so we just sold our house recently. One of the guys that moved in, I won't say the company, but he says, I just, I got a job in a week, and they're starting me at thirty bucks an hour. Some, it's just a local company. He said, he lived in Wilmington, is making eight dollars an hour more here than he did there because that's what the market's demanding. That's, so you say, well, what good does it do all of us? The higher the demand, the higher the wages. And that's good for our community. Because when we started, and when these guys started years ago, the scream to us was, we need more jobs, we need better jobs. We need revenue for our schools and for all of these things. And that's exactly what's happening now. And so we think that's a good thing. And this won't continue forever. It's kind of a wave. And we're thankful and very grateful that it has come our way and it will subside. All right, we're still in a public hearing. We have any other folks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's Mike Julian, I live at one thirty-five Whipple Wheel Lane. With all the concern about the traffic flow through there, my concern would be with traffic lights. It's just gonna back up and back up, either coming off the interstate, off the off-ramp, or coming out of Chewy, or coming out of the business park. Not sure that there would be the room to do it, but it seems to me that rotaries would keep the traffic flowing.
That what?
A rotary, roundabouts?
Shot.
So I'm just thinking that a roundabout might would keep the traffic flowing faster and keep it moving instead of having it back up at traffic lights.
Thank you. And again, I have copies of this, y'all are welcome to it. But put your mind's eye getting off of eighty-five onto exit eighty-one. If you, yeah. And by the way, let me make this announcement. For those of you who don't know me, my wife and I have bought a house and will be living at the end of Long Ferry Road. So I'm not doing this to you, I'm doing it with you. This is part of, I'll be driving that road every day for the rest of my life. All of our kids are married and gone, and we got rid of our larger home with a lot of weekend maintenance, and we're downsizing, and we have bought a house down Long Ferry Road. So I'll be right there with you. But in your mind's eye, getting off eighty-five, if you're going to work for Chewy, that's folks' concern right now, right? There will be a dedicated lane on the right. You won't have to go to the right. You'll move into the center lane and have the same travel lane that you had before. Now, there are gonna be some traffic lights. And I just have to trust that DOT and those folks know what they're doing. Otherwise, we'd pull the traffic lights out at Jake Alexander and one fifty. I mean, the traffic lights serve, they serve a safety and an efficiency purpose. And so. Well, if you think about it, Red Rock will be devoting part of their property to widening the road. Well, no, it's six tenths of a mile. No, the four lanes, I think what you'll see is one, two, three, four, yeah. So those will come in as you approach the project. So if you're gonna turn right into the project, you'll move over in the right-hand turn lane.
Chairman, chairman, if we're gonna continue, we need to come to the microphone. There's nobody can hear anything.
I got you, I got you.
I just mean from the interstate, where Chewy is, the six tenths of a mile to where the Red Rock property starts, at the beginning of there's four lanes, is that two-lane stretch gonna be raised to four lanes? Because you're still gonna have those tractor-trailers all day long and thousands of cars for employees all day long. That's gonna need to be four lanes also. That's the question.
Yes, so there's the ramp, then there's service road. Look, can I give this to you? Can I give this to you to look at? No, I have extra copies. So that'll show you what's happening. And again, we understand this traffic issue. It's the one thing that we have wanted to focus on above all. And that's why, above and beyond what DOT is requiring for this project, the county has commissioned its own study. You won't figure it out there, because I'm still trying to figure it all out. But anyway, do we have other? Yeah, come on, come on up. All right, thanks for coming.
My name is Zachary Hedrick, and I live at nineteen eighty-five Long Ferry Road. And if you look in the developmental package that he provided, the little square right in the middle of the whole development is my family's property. So I, more than anybody else here, understand what is going to be going on in regards to being dumped on the community. Okay, I mean, it's right, it's not down in the middle of our property.
So are you in the Carlton, you in the middle of the Carlton site?
So I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing what people are saying when this is all a developmental thing. Because my family has taken the time to speak with Red Rock to, you know, understand where they're coming from. And it's, I didn't wanna have to come up here today because I didn't want Red Rock to feel any type of way towards us or anything like that. But what people are trying to spin against Red Rock is really upsetting because they're not affected like my family is affected. My home is a hundred and two years old. It's paid for. My family's lived there for probably about fifteen years. And we're not making a stink. And there's been a lot of rumors spread about, you know, Dollar General, fast food, other retail things. This is distribution. You know, this is jobs. I work at a real estate firm. We know that there's housing that's just dilapidating. Let people come. Build those houses. There's people that need jobs that are on the streets. We should be more concerned about them than our own selfish interests because we want to make the community what we want.
Yeah, just address the board, because you're here to talk.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just getting a little bit heated, okay?
All right.
But I still stand on what I said. And I thank you for your time listening to me. And I just didn't want false rumors or selfish interests to get in the way of this proceeding moving on. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All right, is there anyone else? We're glad to hear from you. Is there anyone else? You want a round two? All right. Well, we, I tell you what, we normally don't, but come on. No, we've got time. We normally don't go two rounds, but I'm gonna let you come for it because this is important. I want you to, come on, yeah, come on. Besides, you seem like a nice guy.
Not ten o'clock at night, so.
Be here at ten o'clock either.
Okay. It seems like to me, we're putting, well, not we, but Red Rock and possibly the county commissioners here are putting a whole lot of ifs. What if this works? What if that works? What if it don't work? What we gonna do with them vacant buildings? What's gonna happen? Here, that's another of my concerns, kind of like I said. I know the Carlton family, I'm there. I've lived down there for forty-nine years. I've had great-grandparents live down there probably for a hundred and fifty, possibly longer. And again, plus, there's ifs, if this, if that. You know, there's people out there that, there's jobs about everywhere you go. It's now hiring. There. I mean, if people wanna work, want, I don't see if we're gonna get employees if they don't wanna work. Where they gonna come from then? There, I hate to be, sound kind of negative, but to me, it's plain to see throughout Rowan County, and there especially. Now hiring. Now hiring. Okay, I'm done, thank you.
The Economic Development Commission, who is our arm of a real estate firm here, they're not part of Rowan County, but they're an independent firm. That's who Scott works for. They can tell you that within, what, fifty-mile radius, it used to be, a couple of years ago, that there was at least three and a half million people within a fifty-mile radius of Rowan County. And these companies like Macy's, who are multi-billion dollar companies, they do studies on this day in and day out. I can't tell you where the job They do studies on this day in and day out. I can't tell you where the jobs are coming from. Uh, it's, it's hard for us to get somebody to work in Salisbury.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying. You see signs.
They know. And if they can't get them, they'll have to raise their rate so they can get them because they're not going to invest. A half a billion dollars in Rowan County without finding people to go to work for.
What, what was your last name again?
Shoef, S A.
Mr. Shoef.
You and I talked at the military party department.
Yes, I do remember that. Yeah, I'll, I'll just say one more thing. Um, there's two kinds of building projects. One is called a build-to-suit. Chewy was a build-to-suit. The developer talked Chewy into picking Rowan County. And then they built them a building. That's a build-to-suit where you've identified. The company and you know exactly what you're building, even down to what color the. Uh, fixtures are going to be in the bathroom, right? But then there's also something called a speculative building. And because there is so much demand in the market. Developers are. Um, the, 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 the folks who are creating the demand, the manufacturers, the distributors, all of these companies, they want the buildings now. So they're building these buildings because of the huge demand and my guess is going to be. And you, you're exactly right, Mr. Shoef, there's some ifs. But my guess is, uh, before this building is. Even close to being done, we'll be sitting in here talking about the tenant who wants to come here. Now, is there a possibility that that doesn't happen? Uh, the world is full of possibilities. Anything, anything could happen, but that is highly unlikely. And if that building ends up empty, we still get the tax revenue from it and then we're really not worried about.
This is foresight. What if, uh, Red Rock files bankruptcy then?
Well, it's probably a J question, but we probably end up with a really valuable industrial park. That, that we're able to develop either way. Yes, sir, please come up here and let me give you one. We're not giving you another one, Jay. Alright. Alright, thank, thank you, Mr. Shoef.
I asked Red Rock that very question because, uh, when we were talking with them. We talked about interest rates and I said, at what point with higher interest rates will this stop what you're going to do? And he said, we don't borrow money. Like a lot of folks do from banks or wherever they folks go. He said, most of our, and we have investors that put money into this. And that they don't, they're not going to rely on banks like I would have to do. Of course, nobody would loan me fifty dollars, much less fifty million. But it's, it's a legitimate question and I ask it, uh, earlier and that was their response to me is that. They are not as prone to. The increase or decrease of interest rates to complete their projects.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Shoef. Alright, anyone else? Alright, if not, then we're going to close the public hearing and I did want to, um, ask Todd. If, um, a- anything in this that you would like to kindly, um, address or maybe respond to?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Uh, not really. Um, and the only thing that I would add is that, one, the incentives. Are, uh, the way I would put it, performance-based, um, meaning that. There are no incentives unless there is a tenant, so all the risk is purely upon Red Rock. Um, the other thing that I would add is on that. Uh, four point two million on the infrastructure that we're asking for the reimbursement for. That does not include the design permitting fees or anything like that. It is purely the construction costs. Uh, so we are still absorbing a lot of that our, ourselves. Um, and we just appreciate the opportunity, uh, to come to, to Rowan County and hopefully create some good opportunities. You are correct, um, our investors do require us to provide them. Um, with a, a labor study to show that the labor is there. Um, kind of how we go about that. Every developer has their own way, so it's a little proprietary, but. It's based upon average drive times in a market for employment. Um, so there are standards, uh, throughout. Uh, the greater Charlotte area, the triad area, the triangle area, um, et cetera, et cetera, as you come out. Uh, the other thing I would say is that, yes, we are headquartered in, um. In, in Columbia. However, we have a, a satellite office that's in Charlotte. So we do feel like this is something we're, we're doing in our hometown and so it's, it's very personal to us. We are in. Sixteen other markets, uh, throughout the nation with currently about, uh. I think it's around twelve million now in, um, twelve million square feet of industrial space, uh, throughout the US. So this is the one that, that we really want to do to, to be closer to home and I don't have to get on a plane and go anywhere during the process. But that being said, uh, we want to do things right and we continue to just want to help the communities to have opportunities.
Thank you, Todd. Alright, uh, Scott, anything else from you? Commissioners, any other discussion? Alright, if not, do we have a motion to approve, uh, the, the request from the EDC regarding Red Rock? Alright, do we have a second? Alright, any other discussion? Uh, before we vote, if anyone would like to speak with us about this, any other information we have, please come, come see us, call us. I'm happy to talk to you about it, right? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you very much. Thank you, Todd. Hope you all feel better. Alright, we'll move on to, uh. Another economic development project. I've told some folks in the last few days that, um, and I, this is. Probably factually true, the past five days may, may, may be the most significant five days and. Uh, at least from a project standpoint in Rowan County history. And so we're just very grateful, uh, for folks who want. To invest here in Rowan County. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, next for consideration is a land purchase request from General RV. Uh, this is a company that was, uh, founded in nineteen sixty-six in Michigan. And is considered one of the nation's premier recreational vehicle dealers. Uh, currently they operate fourteen dealerships over seven states. Looking for a, uh, site along the eighty-five corridor for a new facility in the southeastern United States. And they've identified a county-owned property as a site of interest. This property is a little over forty acres. It's located at the end of East Ritchie Road behind Coots Elementary. Uh, parcel number four oh one, one oh eight. The company is offering two point nine million dollars for the property. In the past couple of months, there was an appraisal done on the property and its market value is estimated to be one point nine five million dollars. And if acquired, General RV plans to open a large RV dealership and service center on the property. The company predicts it would create about a hundred and fifty full-time jobs over the next three years. In a variety of fields such as, uh, mechanics, uh, finance, administration, sales. And according to the company, the average salary for these jobs would be sixty-five thousand dollars a year. And as, in regards to the facility, uh, they would invest about twenty-five million dollars through the construction of a, a new building. An installation of equipment and they estimate it would be done in about thirty months. Uh, as far as we know, uh, this property is zoned appropriately for this proposed use, so we don't see any regulatory issues regarding that. And regarding assistance, uh, General RV is not, uh, asking for any, uh, incentives, anything like that. They're just asking that the, the commissioners consider selling them the property for the two point nine million dollars they've offered. Now, normally, uh, offers to purchase county-owned property are subject to the upset bid process, but what the EDC is asking is the board consider this. Uh, conveyance through general statutes for economic development purposes, which allow for private negotiation of the land sale. Uh, provided some numbers to the board for this project. And these are based on that twenty-five million dollar investment I mentioned and the current, uh, county tax rate. And also, we tried to factor in depreciation best we could using depreciation schedule J and we projected ten-year lifespans. Now, we anticipate there'll be some additional investment in equipment over the next ten years, but these projections do not include that because we don't have those numbers. Based on that, we project about one point six million dollars in revenue to the county over the next ten years. In, uh, real property taxes and personal property taxes for this project. But besides that, uh, we always talk about indirect and induced benefits for a project. We, uh, project that this would create about another sixty-six indirect and induced jobs as a result of General RV's new facility here. And those sixty-six new jobs would, uh, create about four point million, four point zero two million dollars in employee wages and benefits. Uh, in addition to that, we project about ten point nine million dollars in gross revenue for the companies creating these sixty-six indirect and induced jobs. And by year three, General RV projects that their new facility will generate about ten million dollars in annual sales in areas such as parts, flavors, service and warranties. Which we feel will lead to an additional sales tax revenue for Rowan County. And another number provided to us by the company is, uh, they estimate about ten thousand of their customers each year will spend about six hours in Rowan County. We had the, uh, Tourism Development Authority run some numbers for us and they estimate that these ten thousand visitors would result in approximately seven hundred and forty thousand dollars in additional spending. In our community, restaurants, hotels, stores, things like that. So what we're asking today is that the board consider the sale of this parcel four oh one, one oh eight to General RV for two point nine million dollars. And, uh, also wanted to add, we have a company representative here. It's Mr. John Ballas. He is the Director of Facilities and Development for General RV. I'm sure he'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Does John want to come up? Welcome, John.
Thanks for the overview, Scott. It's very thorough. Appreciate it. My name is John, so I'm the Director of Development for General RV. Um, first off, I'd like to thank, uh, the commission and the EDC. Um, really appreciate all your time throughout this process. Um, you've made it easy on us, um, and thank you for considering us for this site. Um, we feel that this site and this community, um, are a very good fit for our business. There's a very strong RV market here, a strong employment base, um, and also a need for a high-quality RV dealership. We believe in forming strong mutually beneficial partnerships. And our commitment is to be a premier partner for our customers, our employees and our communities. We believe that we'd be a strong economic partner for Rowan County. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Chair, apologies to John for mailing his last name.
Okay. Alright, we'll open the floor once again for a public hearing. Um, and we're doing this because we are looking to sell this property under an economic development project. So if anyone would like to speak, have anything to say about this, a good time for you to come forward. Alright, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, I've, I've been pretty involved in this one as well. Let me just, um. I, I think it's great that we get to talk about the benefits and how we kind of arrive at this. We, we originally, a few months ago, got an offer for tax value on this land, which was about one point two million dollars. Um, we decided we'd not had a. An appraisal on this land and sometimes we had a, a commercial appraiser do an appraisal and it came out at one point nine million. So, uh, the original offer was bumped to one point nine million and, uh, that. That item was actually added to the agenda of one or, one of our county commission meetings a couple of months ago. And we had intended on bringing it to you, the public, to sell for one point nine million. The same day, we got a contact from, uh, General RV and they offered more. And this began to happen going back and forth between this other developer and General RV and finally, General RV said. Can we just come to Rowan County and meet with you all? So they brought their whole team down. Was it from Michigan, John? Yep, brought the whole team from Michigan. We had, we had, we, uh, had lunch with them here in Rowan County. And I'll be honest with you, and we've told them this, uh, we weren't real keen on it to begin with. Um, on one of your slides, Scott, it said about ten million dollars of sales. That, that's really going to be the taxable sales to us. Uh, they're anticipating about a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of sales a year. But most of that, like our car dealerships in the community, um, the, the county doesn't get anything from that. That goes to D M B, right? So we weren't really that interested because we didn't see. Much of, or any of that money coming back. But then the things that started, um, getting very interesting to us is when. We began to look at, uh, out of that hundred and fifty, about ten million of it will be service and sales. Of stuff that you might buy for an RV that is taxable, like the fuzzy dice you hang in the rear. Rearview mirror, whatever, and also, uh, the service that they do. But then when we learned. That there were going to be, um, a hundred and fifty and, and likely more employees. Earning sixty-five thousand dollars a year plus, we then began to think. Well, if this first developer, who guess what they wanted to build, uh, another speculative building. If that first developer came in to build a speculative building, what are the chances that they would pay sixty-five thousand a year? We, we, we didn't know the answer to that, but, uh, it's the old bear in the woods or, or a fox in the bag, right? And so this really became very, very interesting to us. The fact that they'll attract tens of thousands of folks to Rowan County a year and a lot of those folks. Come with an appointment on Saturday, so they drive in Friday night, stay in our hotels, eat in our restaurants. But I, I do want to tell you this, as we were, as we were being romanced. By these folks, we said, well, if you guys are as good a deal as you say you are for your community, we would like. Uh, some references from some mayors or economic development folks in your community. And so they did. And so we did a Zoom call with two of the locations where they have these set up. And these folks absolutely love General RV and said they had become a huge part of the community. Uh, they're, they're very giving. If there are things going on in the community, they can help or contribute to. They do. They become a big part of the community. And, uh, they, they encouraged us, uh, to, um. Uh, to do some type of partnership with General RV. So having vetted them. It, it became more and more apparent this would give us some diversity, um, in what we're doing up and down the interstate. Uh, plus, we've spoken with Rowan Cabarrus Community College. They'll need some training. They'll, they'll do, um, diesel mechanic training and all type of training, so we have a great partnership that we can do. And also, they've done, uh, internships through local high schools because, uh, that, that is, uh. They, they are like everyone else. They want employees that, uh, continue to come to their facility. So I, I wanted to let y'all know that's why we became interested in this, the high-paying jobs, the partnerships. And good references we had from multiple communities who really, really love them. So, uh, that's why we're here today.
Scott, wasn't this about forty-one acres?
A little over forty acres, correct?
I went to West Rowan High School, so I had to do this multiplication numerous times here to make sure that's right. But this land that belongs to U citizens. Rowan County, this is going to be sold at seventy thousand dollars and they. Unlike, they've got the big bargain in the world, even though this is a good site. We're turning it into a non-productive site, meaning that the county owns it. There's no taxes that have been paid on it. In what, last twenty years? How long has that been out there, Jay? Thirty-five years? We haven't gotten any tax money off of that parcel in however long. that commercial site's been there. And now it is going to be turned into a productive tax-based source and you're getting
paying a million over appraised value, so that's good, and they're asking for no incentives, so that's a good thing.
I'll say, does that mean each one of us get a half a million?
Well, like, I just mentioned, I like the fact that these are some good paying jobs that someone didn't have to go get a four-year degree to get and also that land being that close to the school kind of limits what could go there, so I think it's a very good fit for the area. And probably spur some more growth closer to Dix and, and those other stores up there.
Yeah, my understanding is stream runs through this as well, so what you could develop that for as far as the size of building is pretty limited to begin with, so if you think this is a great fit, John, we're, we're glad you're here. Appreciate y'all's interest in investing in Rowan County, so any other questions? All right, if not, do we have a motion to approve the sale of that Rowan County land to General RV for two point nine million? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you, John, thank you, tell your team hello.
They'll do thank you as well.
All right, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we got the public hearing for Z O two twenty-two, a request from R A to N B C D for a general contracting business. This is located at the fifty-two hundred block of Bringle Ferry Road. So the parcel in question here, it's about a four and a half acre parcel off of Bringle Ferry between Union Church and Beagle Club. So taking a look at the site here, we can see that predominantly in that area, you got, it's pretty rural and characteristic, you got a couple of houses along Bringle Ferry, but other than that, it's pretty much wooded and fields. So the actual site plan itself, it's a little bit hard to see from here, but the access is coming off of the adjacent parcel onto this property here. So zoom in here. What they're proposing is a seventy-two hundred square foot building for a general contractor business with four eight hundred square feet and lean twos on either side. And then there's a small gravel parking lot in the front here and the access is coming off of the adjacent parcel. And just to back up a little bit, a little bit of background about this request. The owner, him and his brother own the properties out here and they did a family subdivision to both build houses on the property, but they also want to start their business or move their business out here. And generally, we would do this as a rural home occupation, they'd have their house out there, they'd start a business after they moved out there, but they're looking to go ahead and get the business started first, so in order to do that, they need to do a rezoning. And neighborhood business is the most appropriate for that type of use. So moving forward here with the neighborhood business application, this use is an S R use in the neighborhood business zoning. And so these are the fifteen standards any S R, the use in neighborhood business requires, and we did find they meet all these standards. But just some general photos of the site. So this is looking back towards Salisbury. This one over here is looking more towards Dan Nicholas Park. This house here is already owned by the Rosman's. And then this is the new driveway coming in to access the site. So a couple more photos here, this is approximately where the building's going to go, right here where these tree, right next to these trees. This is just looking slightly over to the right for a little bit more of the rezoning area. This is the adjacent property where there's a house with some outbuildings alongside. And then this is looking back, there's a subdivision that kind of backs up to the adjoining property that's owned by the Rosman's. And then this property is the house located across the street. So take a look at the zoning in the area, it's predominantly zoned R A out there. There's a little bit of C B I when you get back up to Dunn's Mountain Road, then there's an R S zone subdivision just before you get to Providence Church. And then this falls within area one of the Eastern Area Land Use Plan, it does recommend rural businesses along thoroughfares and neighborhood businesses generally the appropriate zoning for those and Bringle Ferry Road is recognized as a major thoroughfare. And then one of the things it talks about is appearance standards and setbacks may be enhanced with these districts. And what they have proposed is going to be, it's going to meet the R H O standards, so the rural home occupation standards. And it's looking to be approximately five hundred feet off of the, of the road, so that's well in advance of what the setback requirements will be. So this is the information on the notice of hearing, there were four properties within the notice area. A sign was posted on site and then an ad was also placed in the paper. And then back at the planning board, this was approved unanimously. They adopted the following statement of consistency and reasonableness. And then today we'll need to adopt a statement of reasonableness and consistency and then have a motion to approve, deny, or table the request. I have the site plan up here for your convenience and then both me and the owners are here as well for any questions.
Okay, any questions for Aaron?
Oh, yeah, so here in the picture that's up there right now, okay, it's a are those two long slender pieces?
Yeah, these right here.
Okay.
Yeah, those are the lean twos on, on the sides of the building.
Okay, so my question is, is do the same people that own this particular parcel also own the parcel where the road's going to be?
Yes. Yeah, it's a family-owned property.
Yes, but what happens if for whatever reason, the family has to sell and they end up selling to two different two different buyers? Where is the access to the current parcel going to come from?
If they needed to, they could, they have a access easement on this side of the property as well. So there is more access off of Bringle Ferry if they chose to move that. So if they did sell the property in the future, they'd have that option to move their access.
Okay, good, thanks.
All right, anything else for Aaron? All right, if not, anything from you guys, just long for the ride? Yeah, yeah, all right, we'll open the floor to a public hearing, if there's anyone that would like to speak about this, let us know.
Y'all know, y'all know my name, do I need to state it again? Okay, a little about three quarters of a mile, maybe one mile just past that. And my big concern is with commercial construct, construction equipment coming in and out of there is gravel into the road into Bringle Ferry Road and Bringle Ferry Road being a major thoroughfare. And having spoken with staff, I believe the D O T standard states that a certain amount of the driveway has to be paved coming off Bringle Ferry Road. Is that a true statement, Aaron? Thank you. That would be my only concern is gravel being into the road and if, and I have no problem with this being approved, I actually am for it, but I would just like to see that a certain amount of the driveway be paved.
And to that note, the D O T, they put on their driveway permits that they require the first fifty feet of a commercial driveway to be paved.
That's taken care of anyway, then.
Yeah, that's on their driveway permit.
Yeah, got you. All right, anyone else? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and first thing we need to do is offer up a statement of reasonable sub.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that Z O two dash twenty-two was consistent with the East Rowan, East Area Land Use Plan and reasonable and appropriate based on the following. Here's, it will have low impact on the surrounding community, consistent with the N B and R H O standards. The Bringle Ferry Road is consistent, is considered a major thoroughfare, which is where N B is intended. And seems to align with the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
All right, and that's a motion, Craig second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, then, do we have a motion to approve Z O two dash twenty-two? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you, thank you, guys, appreciate it. Mr. Muir.
This is an appeal of an address assignment as provided in the county's addressing and road naming ordinance. The Christie family has requested the board consider an appeal of the address assignment from the addressing program administrator and the addressing program administrator consists of planning department, the G I S staff, as well as telecommunications. Looking at the memo that's in your packet, just a little history, it's seems that the Christies were assigned an address in twenty sixteen of Bronco, ten forty-five Bronco Run, based on the petition. And they apparently have continued to use a address on Warren Drive, which is also a private road. This was brought to our attention through the West Rowan Fire Department. We had sent notices to the Christies to request that they change the address, but based on the policy, they opted to appeal that decision. And that decision was reviewed by the address program administrator. And I think even one or two of the folks went out and took a look at it and the decision resulted in the same. We felt that ten forty-five Bronco Run was the correct address. And based on the ordinance, the Christies have elected to appeal that decision to the board. And so we haven't done one of these before, we're in a very long time. So the Christies, I believe, are here, I ask that you allow them to speak and then we've got someone from telecommunications as well as G I S and the fire department that can probably answer some questions as to why the decision was made.
So Ed, could you with, with the?
I can't. Can't do it.
Can do what?
Can't do what you're going to ask.
With, with, with a map?
Yeah, that I'm ju, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step aside and be the facilitator in this point, I really am just an excuse for being here in this case. Nothing, nothing more, I, I'm going to rely on the experts here, I think the Christies can tell you what their stance is and then our folks that have done the addressing and done the research on it are going to provide their feedback and I, I apologize, but I think it's going to go better if they can explain that to you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, that's fine. Hey, welcome.
Hey, I'm Brandon, I'm the one that lives in front of them, can I use this, Brandon Holt, H O L T? I live here. Let me see how it can work this, can I zoom in?
That, okay, that one, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, let's leave it zoomed out.
Okay, this original road here, I have some notes from the, from the Christie couple that's been there for sixty-plus years, the road originally, the only road, sorry, the only road that was originally there has been there for over a hundred years, it stopped about right here. When the lots were broken up, I want to say in the nineteen forties, ten kids, it was split up, given off, sold off, something like that, all down through here, this road came in secondary. They gave their nephew, he's your nephew, right? The one that's in the back, this, there was a house that got put back here in the back part. They had an easement that came a dump along or agreement or something, they, they bought this little parcel right here and they brought it in through here. The road was going to come up through this way, so it really wasn't going to impact them. It seems before this new home got put in back there, there wasn't a lot of issue with this being the hundred block and then this was the two hundred block. That house got put back there twenty sixteen-ish, so sometime in twenty seventeen is when these addresses started changing. They're in their mid eighties and, and Ms. Christie explained to us saying she's got thirty-five, forty accounts. That she doesn't have a lot of help to go and change her address with all these places. That they were requesting that this still stay the hundred block and this stay the two hundred block. Instead of this Bronco Run that got put in, and, and my understanding, the people that live back there, which is family of theirs, they didn't care about the Bronco Run if it went away. So, so they were more or less wanting the Bronco One Run to go away and we go back to the hundred block and the two hundred block. That was their whole reason for appealing it, just because of the history of it, they've been there, he's been there for eighty-four years. The road's been there for over a hundred, it was named after his dad, he bought the road sign and put it there originally thirty-five, forty years ago. They had some friends come over a couple of weeks ago, maybe three or four weeks ago, and they, they actually gave them this address, this ten forty-five. And the people couldn't find the address, they said it's a non-existent address. So on the other side, before that new home got put in, emergency services didn't seem to have an issue finding the one thirty, one forty, one fifty, and one sixty. This was the hundred block, that was the two hundred block, Bronco Runs got put in, there's been a couple nine one one calls in the last few years and that's what's brought up the issue with the safety concern and, and we don't want it confused for nine one one or any emergency because there are elderly neighbors that live behind us, we want nine one one to get there, but there didn't seem to be a problem until the house got moved in and this road got put in. The county originally, I think, gave them, or they bought this parcel here, they moved in their double wide, the next day it was sold. So the road really should have been put down here and, and it never got put in. I think it was a word of mouth thing that they were going to put that road in, but after the mobile home got put in, it was the day after, two days after? Two days after the mobile home got put in, this parcel got sold right here in our backyard, you know, it was a handshake deal, so we kind of saw that they weren't going to get a road get put in to their newly built house. So the Christies are just asking if they can keep their address that they've had for the last eighty-something years and don't have to go through the headache of changing everything. And we just think that
Didn't they have to make some kind of arrangements because of, of
that wasn't
transporting that mobile home, didn't they have to buy some land or something?
That's the parcel I'm talking about.
That was it, so they bought it and then sold it after it got
The next, a day or two later, yes, sir. The trailer company was pushing them, they brought out an excavator and you can almost kind of see the road comes in there, but the trailer company actually pushed over a bunch of trees and cut a path in. They brought the, the double wide through here, this was not here, of course, these people that live here didn't own this at the time, they bought it from Mindy, dragged them through and put it in and, and once the trailer company got the, the trailer put up, it, it was done, I mean, they, they got paid. So it was left on the homeowner to build the road and two days later, they sold off, hey, we don't need it, we just needed it for the trailer company and the county to get our trailer back here. Got the trailer back there and everything was approved, permits, I guess, were good. They sold it to this gentleman and he was happy and he built a barn on it, so.
Yeah, they couldn't get the trailer down the original road?
No, they couldn't get it through there, not through that bin, I have trees on, on, you know, you can see where our property is, but they couldn't get it through right here, which is where the original Warren Drive, there was a sign right there telling them which way to go, but they couldn't get that, the trailer through there, so that's why they bought this off of a lady that lived down here, her father lived there, he passed in twenty fourteen. So they pushed over all these trees and held it right on up through there, got it all the way back there and, and that's kind of, once the trailer got put in, it, you know, it, everything got pushed to the wayside, hey, we already have an existing road. The people that actually lived back there lived here, they just needed to be their home, so they dragged in a, a brand new home and put it back They just needed to be their home, so they dragged in a, a brand-new home and put it back here. Now the son lives here. My friends that I brought today live here. So it just seems to me that for eighty years, if there was no confusion with emergency services, FedEx, FedEx stops at our house weekly, because they can't find this, you know, Bronco Run. And, and again, you, you can pull out your phone to Google, type in ten forty-five, ten thirty, ten fifty, whatever, Bronco Run, and it's not gonna bring up anything. It's gonna be a non-existent address. And, and that's their biggest argument, that it's a non-existent address. So they don't wanna change all this stuff. I think the, the power company and hopefully now emergency services and the communication get all that updated. But as far as like Google and the maps and stuff, it's, it's not there. But they just wanna keep the one forty. They got a lot of years left, so they wanna keep it.
What's your address now?
One thirty Warren. Well, it gets kinda confusing, because I own part of one, this, this Warren Drive. I'm one thirty Warren Drive. That's the first that I've seen. That ten thirty, I think, or does that say one thirty? Yeah, all my, all my mail comes to us under one thirty. I think the only thing, which is weird, because I own a few houses and some other properties that, when I gave Duke Power my address of one thirty Warren Drive, they were able to pull up my account. They didn't say anything about the Bronco Run, but the bill actually comes at that ten thirty Bronco Run. But when I called to get power turned on on one of our investment properties, it's one thirty Warren Drive. I think just for simplified reasons, we put our sign back up right here for the hundred block and the two hundred block. And, and I think everything goes back to the way it was.
So is part of it still Warren?
Yeah.
That, that is?
I guess this part, the, the second road that came in on the eighties. But at one time, like I said, it was that this was gonna be the hundred block, and this was gonna be the two hundred. So, yeah, the Warren Drive part now, I guess, the way it's going is gonna be the other people's road.
Straight, straight part, okay.
No, 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 not the straight one. This turn-down one.
Yeah.
And that's all they're asking.
All right. Well, let's hear the other side. Thank you, and we may have you back up, okay?
I know.
Oh, here comes John. Oh, God. Boy, it's gonna get real.
Good evening, Commissioners, Allen Cross, Chief Emergency Services, have Chief Tom Morrison with me from Westrolynn Fire Department, and Columbus Hawks from G I S in the back as well. Our concern is making sure we can get somebody to them, getting emergency help to them when they need to. Our concern came up, Chief Morrison called us and asked me about some addresses in there. That was one particular one he had a concern with, because they, it took them a little while to, to find the address.
In the past, the Warren Drive, where they live, the short portion, they had wooden signs made. And their address was on one of those wooden signs, and it was just made out of wood and it pointed down that road. And we knew where to go, but no issue. They had wooden signs made pointing the other way for that section of Warren Drive. It was all Warren Drive. I don't know how long it's been since there's been three residents on that section of the road where the Christies live. I don't, we've been back to the single wide back there, and that man's passed away some time ago. On medical calls back there, the last, I don't know how long it's been, we've been to two med, three medical calls on the Christies. I think two on Ms. Christie and one on him. And we were given the Warren Drive address. So we drive in there, and there's a sign pointing this way, showing Warren Drive, but there's a new sign showing Bronco Run. I'm driving the truck, and I turn and go down Warren Drive looking for one forty. And there, and this is when the new sign got put up. Nothing to do with the sign, nothing to do with naming the road, and I totally understand Christie's point. I've known some of that family up there for years. The only concern I had, and the only concern I have to this day, and my fire department has, along with the EMS. And they have a medical emergency right here riding up and down Warren, what's now called Warren Drive, instead of going down Bronco Run. I think, I, I heard the story about the Bronco Run was supposed to come in on another driveway up there. I, I'm sure that's true. With the Ken folks that put the double wide back at the back, once the manufacturer of the mobile hole went back there, and I basically cut a road, I guess, to get it back in there, he had no reason to cut the road out to the other road and, and, and move it, I guess. So according to the ordinance, once the third resident went back there this time, it had to have a name, correct?
Well, that's what I wanted to know, is what caused this change? And is that the ordinance, a third house?
Two houses on a private drive is fine. Once you go to that third one, I don't care if it's my driveway, your driveway, if it's your driveway and two anymore family members come in there and put houses, we gotta, you gotta name it. Somebody's gotta name it. And my only concern is for these fine folks getting the medical help that we can give them. I just wanna be able to find them.
If, if it was, as the gentleman recommended, if it, if it was Warren on both, but a one hundred and a two hundred block, would that be acceptable to y'all? Could you? Yeah, that's how, what? Yeah, I know, I know. It, it was.
It's just, it's just, it's up to you folks, whether you wanna enforce your ordinance on the third house being on that drive, it's a driveway. I didn't realize until the gentleman spoke now that basically, we've been back as far as the single wide, which might have been a brother of Mr. Christie's. I don't know. I've known some Christies in there all my life. We've been back as far as his trailer on, on calls on him. That was the only two, their house and that trailer back there was the only two residents that were there for the last several years. Might have been a couple abandoned trailers there. But also put that third one back there, and he continues using that road. Evidently, the company bought excavators in there to be able to get his double wide in there. He's using that road. So now there's three residents using that particular drive. I had no problem with it in the past when I was two back there, and they had the wooden signs, and I'm sure some of the Christie family probably made those. You go down through there, and the address was one forty, or it was pointing that way, and you went right around there, and there was these folks' house. The trailer back there was the same way, and then there was signs going the other direction. It was all Warren Drive. It wasn't an issue. But when the Bronco Run name came up and the sign went up, telecommunications get to call, and they dispatch us to one forty Warren Drive, where do you think we're gonna go? I've got paid people now that don't even live in this county, because I had to put on paid people in the daytime, Monday through Friday. They don't know my area like I do. They're gonna go down Warren Drive. If they've got a serious medical issue, it's costing us valuable time. That's my only concern, is their well-being. Do I care what the road's called or what their actual address is? No, as long as I can get a nine-one-one center to tell me where to go, all my, all my concern is.
Mr. Chairman, if you split that road like that, and one hundred goes this way, and the rest of it goes this way, then you have to worry about people down at the other end. Are you gonna delay their care because they went this way following one hundred trying to get down to two thirty or something?
Two thirty. Or two months.
Yeah.
But you're, you're in inclination, whenever you're in a fire truck and ambulance, is to go straight. So if you go one hundred, you're gonna go straight trying to find the two hundred block that's not there. So it's not good to split off.
Can, can, can you do a north and a, and a west?
Oh, you're still changing the name, aren't you? Which, which is what they don't want. Oh, here, here comes, here comes the smart, the smartest guy in the room.
I figured you'd like to see me. So I think this one will tell a little more about what's going on. And I'm not trying to cut in anybody. I mean, it's just, I've been doing addressing for about eighteen years, and I've seen it, I've done it. But if you look at the purple line on the map, that actually shows how you would access the Christie's home. And I apologize, I don't know what order these are in. I've done them quickly. But so right here's the picture where I actually wrote out, there's the Bronco Run sign that actually points down to Christie's driveway, which is actually depicted here as picture one. That's where I took the sign at. So basically, if you pull in off of Centenary Church Road onto Warren Drive right now, then you would either go straight, which would be Bronco Run, or you take a right on the Warren, what's still Warren Drive. So basically, the Christies, there was an old abandoned home there as well, and now you've got a camper, the single wide and the double wide at the end, that nobody's really said about. But anyway, that makes at least three on that driveway that had to be named. We can't do the, or I say we can't do the one hundred block and two hundred block the way they want to, because in your mind, and I mean, y'all do the fire service and stuff, in your mind, you're not cutting off onto the road on the one hundred block and then going on another road for two hundred block, or vice versa. So we're just trying to, you know, try to clean it up and make it easier for nine-one-one personnel to get there. The easement they're talking about is what I've got outlined in the yellow, that actually has never been, and they even said it has never been created.
Well, they cut it in to drag that trailer in. That was the only tires that touched that yellow was that double wide, right? And then it never got, you got the, the half or frequent acre right there, got some later, right there where that purple arrow is. So if the easement was there, that's what we understood, that the people in the back were gonna make that road, and they just never made the road. You put that.
When they came back out, to verify that that easement was the wrong place, because it drove, not just one piece of that double wide through there, they drove it across the Broadway property, which is the big building front, straight from Centenary, across from the drive.
That's right. Did you put that sign, that road sign?
No, I didn't. I, it's the maintenance department. It's for that maintenance department. It was not me.
Originally, he had it Warren and Bronco. It was only two years ago that. If mine was right. It was about two years ago. We had the Warren and the Bronco went down. We went out there and met him when he installed that street.
Hey, could you, could you come up to the mic? Yeah.
And then that street sign was gonna go in right there. He said he was told to put it there, so we left it. But the Warren was going this way, Bronco was going this way. Somehow, in the middle of the night, it got turned, and we noticed it the next day. We didn't turn it back or put a pipe wrench on there or something. But our other question was, this being the Warren family, or Warren's kids and, and his descendants, could they have not got the Warren and then made this the Bronco? You know, I know they would probably have to go all the way down the rest of Warren and ask everybody if they were on board with it, but as Ms. Christie said, she wasn't on board with her address getting changed when they named it. And, and I get what they're saying, you know, so we wanna find some kind of common ground that they can find them. Obviously, this yellow road's not gonna get put in, and that's the confusion of this whole thing.
So Alan, what can we do?
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Or actually, a couple more things. And I mean, Alan can speak for this as well. I mean, you're looking at how you access the property. I mean, don't matter where the easement's at, what easement's there, you're looking at how you actually access the property, and you actually have to go down Bronco Run to get to Christie's house. And I will say too, if I remember correctly, and I don't, it's been a while since I looked at the petition, but the Christie's actually signed the petition as well. They probably did not know their address would change, but they agreed to the road name. And also, he spoke earlier about Google Maps. I've actually got here on one of the, there's Google Maps actually showing the Bronco Run. And I will say that Google is a third-party company. I still, from a G I S standpoint, don't know where they get their information from. But we, we as in the G I S team actually has, went on to their website and submitted the suggestion to Google to see if they would actually add the addresses, the road names and so forth. So I mean, I can't speak for Google, but we will try to get that corrected as well. So that's one more thing. If we stay with the Bronco Run like we are, I'll try to get Google to update their address and everything there as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, cool.
Whoa, 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 hold on. So lemme, lemme, yeah, lemme just explain, because of transparency and all that, we're recording our meetings, and so if you wanna speak, we would just ask you'd come forward so we can get your comments for the record, because you might have some comments that sway us to do something in your direction, and folks wanna know, well, why'd they, why'd they do that? And so we wanna get your comments recorded.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Alan a question?
Yep.
Alan, in AutoCAD, in AutoCAD, if they're dispatched to their address, where will it send the vehicle?
It becomes, is, is their address being one forty Warren Drive, and that's why they tell us it'll take them to somewhere in that one hundred block of Warren Drive, trying to find that address.
So currently, we, we also have paramedics who don't live in the county.
Right.
If they get in, in an ambulance, and they're dispatched, and AutoCAD will not send them to their home.
They'll most likely go to one thirty, to this gentleman's house, and try to find out where it is from there, to lay in response to the careless needed.
Hey, let me, let me ask, what's your name again? Brandon? Okay, i- if we switch those, if we went through the process of switching those, does yours become Bronco?
Because I have a roundabout driveway there.
Okay.
I don't care what it's called.
So yours, yours still remains Warren, you think?
I'll take either one. Me and my mailbox is out here. My house is posted. I got signs on both sides of those driveways. And I mean, if it, fifty-fifty, really.
You know, I'm, 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 I guess I'm more s- sensitive to the idea that Warren Run was named after your family. You know, I mean, it's, you guys could, you guys could do an address change through the, you know, through the postal service, but you, you named it after your family, and unless your family changes their name to Bronco Run.
That's why he's lost sleep in the last three years over.
So what would the process be if, if we tried to flip these two? Where we made the, the?
The original stays Warren Drive, and this goes to the Bronco Run?
Yes. What would that process be?
So basically, most of the time, if we have a situation like that, the planning department, Ed and Pam would actually submit or send out notifications, letting them know that their address is, or that. Basically, we'd send out a petition to each property. Which, man?
Yeah, I, that's, that's what I know, yeah.
And then you'd have, you know, probably eight of those, eight or ten of them, that would be up here doing the same thing. So. But we're talking about, if we're changing this to Bronco Run.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, it would go all the way down to the end.
I know my neighbors. Nobody wants an address change, but we got one thirty, one forty, one fifty, and now we got the new double wide in the back. Nobody lives here, this has been abandoned trailer since ninety-four. This gentleman moved down a few years ago from Ohio, what, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen? He's not gonna care what the name is. This couple right here was a family that got passed on. They would probably care. You got an abandoned trailer there, abandoned trailer there. Gurney Balls, that's a rent property from a couple people that live in Mooresville. And then when you get down into the three hundred block of Warren Drive that we haven't even brought up, that's where Frank and Sylvia Mills and, and Mickey Mills, and then Frank, I don't know Frank's last name, but he lives on the three hundred block, I think, right? So, so now we have a three hundred block, and we dropped that in your lap. So we're gonna have one, two, three, well, we got the camper now, I don't know whose address he's using. So we got five that are actually gonna go down the historical Warren Drive, and we got about, I don't know, five or six on this way, so it's fifty-fifty there, too.
What's the oldest house in that area?
Was built in nineteen thirty-one. Was built nineteen thirty-one.
How about, how about theirs?
When'd you build your house, William?
Nineteen sixty. The abandoned house that, uh, they were referencing, that's the house he grew up in, which was right next to the house he built. Of course, he was born in this house and built his house there and his brother lived back here. I know, that's, uh. I, I'm a hundred percent with him, you know, if, in the need of nine one one getting there. Uh, it, it, you know, I know that's the main reason we did this. Um, but I want them to get there too, you know, and I don't want them saying, hey, we're at ten forty-five and it not show up. But they use a different thing than Google. So, I mean, that makes me feel better. I mean, we can, we can put the signs back up. The Amazon driver ran it over, I don't know, a year ago when we could put them back up, the one forty, uh. Where am I?
So Chief and, uh, and Alan, is there?
You make an exception. Now going from two houses to three and you count the camper, that's four. If we make an exception. Here, the next time this comes up, this is not the only road that we've had a problem with. Columbus can tell you, he's already solved one problem where we had. A road that the third house went and on was a driveway. The third house went on, your ordinance caused for it to be named. He got it done. And no one's fixing to get done. The first one he fixed was on Unburger Road. And the trailer was way back in there, we couldn't find it. The other one was on Jones Road, same deal, we couldn't find it. If you're gonna have an ordinance when it goes from two to three, you need to follow it. If you don't, you're killing emergency services when we try to find these folks. I have the utmost respect for these people, believe you me. Been in their house two or three times on medical calls. They need us again. I want to go back. But I don't want to be riding up and down the wrong road. Does it make any difference to me which roads? Bronco Run and which ones Warren Drive? Absolutely not, as long as I can find the people that needs help. But you gotta stick to your ordinance. If you don't, we're gonna be in trouble when somebody else comes along and puts the third residence there. That's just the way I see it.
So if we're interested in safety. I mean, I think our, we only have one option and that is to try to go through the whole process again and rename ten people. Or to leave it as it is with, with you guys. I'd rather see you all, um. Alive. If there's a fire, well, it's a fire, you'd likely see it, but if it's an emergency EMS out there. And I, what do you all want to?
I mean, I don't. Man, I can feel, I can feel that. Feel for the folks, but I mean, I think it's gonna be too complicated to try to change the names. I, I'm just. I mean, if you, if you, um. I mean, have you guys been using Warren Lane in the piece a guy brings a piece to you or?
Yep.
So, so for all, so the only reason that it's being changed or. It's being, it's being changed for emergency services, but. If they don't go through their forty accounts, they're still gonna get mail at Warren.
Where's your pension come? Warren Drive, your mail.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see what you're saying.
I mean, it's still gonna come there, isn't it?
Yep, the FedEx guy, the pizza man, the only thing is just to do in.
I live at ten forty-five Bronco Run.
Yeah.
I was, I was gonna ask you.
Come up on this. So.
Would you, would you tell them that? Yeah.
Age don't make any difference. If it's changed, if you vote to change it and give them a new address, when it comes up on the CAD, it's nine one one center, it's gonna show that address. I don't have to say. Anything about where we're at. All of them folks are gonna know. It's gonna be in black and white. They're gonna dispatch us there. We're gonna go and we're gonna find it immediately. They won't have to say anything. Except we need help.
Okay. All right, anything, uh, anything else to add? Anything else from, from you? I'm, I don't.
Uh.
If they're, if they're still using their Warren address, it appears they're still getting mail.
Yep.
So the, 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 the problem seems to be the issue of they call in the middle of the night.
Yep.
We've kind of taken care of that. We'll know where they're calling from.
Good. We're gonna keep using it. Yeah, we're fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we need to take action, Ed? Nothing.
You just deny the appeal?
Deny the appeal.
And they're gonna keep using, they're gonna keep using their address.
Right, is to keep it.
Christie's family.
No. Not what you're doing.
Uh, we're, we're gonna leave it as it is.
It don't help us at all find them. It don't help my paid people that don't know the area find them.
No, I think we were talking about that.
You're gonna change it to ten forty.
They're gonna still use their.
It'll be one forty Bronco or what's it gonna be?
It's changing, they're just not gonna do anything.
It's gonna stay the way the road petition did four years ago, three years ago. It's gonna stay just like that petition did. Yeah.
So when you people go in, what, what are you gonna dispatch?
Yep.
You're gonna, you're gonna dispatch to Bronco.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only reason I'm here. And like I said, it wasn't just only this particular road is to find these people when they need it. I don't want to cause them any problems whatsoever.
To be clear, when they will say ten forty-five Bronco Run is if they change it to ten forty-five. Either the way they're billing, everything else. And that's why when the dispatch comes up, they keep.
Well, what if they put up a sign that said ten forty Bronco Run? And I, I understand that, but what I'm saying, as long as the mailman knows we're bringing the mail. Uh, if you put a, if you put a separate sign up in the yard saying this is Bronco Run. Or their address, then if emergency service comes out looking for that address, that sign's right there in the yard.
Right. That was my next point. Nobody's, nobody's mail is delivered down through there.
There's a, there's a number on the phone, number.
And I get what you're saying, John, though, and I'm not arguing with you. I'm just trying to find a solution.
I just want to help these people when they need it.
So do we. We just want to make sure.
Now we're on the same page, though.
That somebody can find them.
Question, when they call nine one one, what comes up on your screen?
Do they have a landline?
I think they have a landline. So it'll come up one forty.
One forty Warren Drive.
Warren Drive.
Which was never the problem until Bronco Run got called. If it never got called.
So it's not coming up as Bronco?
So we can.
And that's why we got.
If the third house hadn't have been added down there and the little signs were still there, it never was an issue. The Bronco Run and the third house has caused a problem.
Alan's got a solution.
So Columbus can go in on the backside of nine one one, it's, it's in the Toronto database and they, he can change that phone number. To the address of ten forty-five or ten forty Bronco Run. So whenever they call, that's what'll show up. The only thing they'll have to do is not dispute that whenever they call. Because we will verify that's what the address is.
So what, what they're saying, Chris, um. What, what they're saying is if you call nine one one. Uh, your phone will show up on their screen as Bronco Run, okay? You follow me? So they'll know where you are, but don't argue with them. Don't tell them you're on, on Warren because technically in the system, you're on Bronco. So they're, they're just saying, don't argue with them and try to convince them you're on Warren because they're gonna have to leave those as they are. For your mail.
For your mail, yes.
Yes.
I still haven't put up a sign anywhere. Dark thirty out there in the truck.
All right, so we're denying, we're denying the petition.
I'm confused now with what we're doing here.
Cause we're not changing.
We're not changing, we're not changing.
We're leaving it the same way.
It's they tell the mailman it's.
And this is why I don't live in the west.
The sign, the sign that he's talking about, there used to be signs, one forty, one fifty, one sixty was this way, two hundred was this way. The Amazon driver ran it over. It's in my ditch. All we gotta do is put it back up. That's all we gotta do is stand it back up.
So, so Alan, has the address been changed yet?
Yes, they've been changed.
Yeah.
So.
It was actually changed a couple.
You notified them that it's been changed.
Yes.
And they were knowing that.
Yes.
So if the board, if the board wants to deny the appeal, the road stays ten forty-five.
See it.
If, if they accept the appeal, the road reverts back.
Forty, that's correct. That's the way I see it.
So, so if the board rejects, it stays Bronco. If they accept, it's not Bronco.
That's the way I see it.
Okay.
But they can still use the mail in regrets.
Okay. All right, so we'll make a motion that the, uh, address stay at ten forty-five Bronco Run. How about we do it? Yeah.
Denying the appeal.
Okay. All right.
I'll vote for any.
Can you help them kind of understand this? All right, thank you for all your time. Appreciate it. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all right.
Go.
Yeah.
I done texted my wife, so don't turn the TV on.
Budget amendments have been provided. Motion to approve budget amendments.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I have some board appointments. Hold on. Uh, Gary Ingram on, this is on Franklin Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, let's see, Gary Ingram and Mark Monroe applied for reappointment. And if approved, the terms will expire April thirtieth. Also Robert Connor applied for a seat that becomes. Vacant April thirtieth. So, uh, motion to approve those three.
Second.
For say aye.
Aye.
Historic Landmarks Commission, Hunter Casper and Lucas Safrid applied for two vacant seats, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. JCPC, what? That's right. Uh, so we have a motion to, uh, make Hunter the January thirty-one and Lucas the April thirtieth. All in favor, say aye. JCPC, Haley Shupin, uh, fill a remainder of the term for general public seat, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Andrew King for Town of Rockaway Planning and Zoning Board ETJ applied to fill a vacant seat, motion and a second for him. All in favor, say aye. City Salisbury Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustment, Esther Adkin Smith applied for a vacant ETJ seat, motion and a second for her.
So move.
Say aye. Henry Ricardo Smith for Run Transit System Advisory Committee, applied to fill the remainder of the term for an at-large seat. Motion and a second to appoint him, please. All in favor, say aye. All right, I move the board entering the closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one four three, three one eight. One one A one to consider approval of the minutes of the closed session held on March twenty first, twenty twenty-two. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute one four three, three one eight, one one A three for attorney-client privilege communication. Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll get going as soon as we clear, clear the room. Thank you. Motion to come out of closed session.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.